We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Baggerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
And Shuldiz.
Here.
Councilmember Butterfield is excused, so eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Rob, will you get that door? It's pretty loud out there.
Close additions or deletions to the agenda, otherwise a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Shuldiz.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. We'll go to the consent items, a call on Vernae Larson, city clerk.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, today for your approval, I have the city council minutes of May 5th, 25; the council work session minutes of May 1st, 25; the council work session minutes of May 12th, 25; the draft minutes from the planning commission meeting of May 7th, 25; approve the hiring agreement of the police chief; the local road improvement program funding agreement; advertisement forbids for the airport runway 13/31 lighting system replacement; consideration of a state temporary liquor permit for Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club; a second consideration of the state temporary liquor permits for the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club; consideration of a state one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license permit for Intuition Brewing LLC; West Central Ducks Unlimited lawful gambling application; and the accounts payable report from 5/125 to 5/1425. And for your information, I have the directors' reports and the financial reports through 4/3025.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve.
Can we pull out the finance report? I'd like to talk about a line item in there, if we can.
On which?
The finance report through 4/302025.
Sure. We can pull that and... We'll go back to it.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Other than what has been pulled from the consent agenda? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Call on Steve to...
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the budget report, and you know, we're a third of the way through the year, because this goes through April. And looking at our... Most of the line items are kind of on pace to make it, but there's one that really stands out to me, because it's a relatively large line item, and that's the engineering under total streets and highways, as it... Almost ninety-eight and a half percent. And I just was curious, you know, where we think that's going to end up? Because if we've blown through our budget in the first four months, then that's a pretty big line item. Where do we think we're going to end up? And where are we going to get the money from to offset that?
Uh?
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The best answer I have on that is, we had our street improvement program for '25 and '26. All the projects were identified in the feasibility and PER. Since then, we have reduced dramatically our street projects for the next couple of years. However, we do have some engineering invoices from our city engineer, Bolton Inc., that we had to pay for. So there are a bunch of projects that have since been shelved, but we have paid those invoices to Bolton Inc., and then we have ceased work and engineering work on those projects. The other large portion would be our 2025 and 2026 feasibility report. And then we have our monthly engineering services from Bolton Inc. So we are taking care of some older invoices.
Yeah, I mean, Tom, or Director Oden has mentioned prior to the meeting that, you know, you're looking at an average of five to seven thousand dollars a month, of just normal engineering service from Bolton Inc., so seven times eight is fifty-six thousand dollars. Are we going to mail the car fifty-six thousand dollars out somewhere else so we can still make budget?
In this case, the... I do not foresee us... We'll have to pay for our engineering services monthly. The biggest ticket item would be our feasibility report, and I do believe that next year is going to be significantly less. We can look at, you know, see how the budgets come in as we go through the year for other areas as well, but this does look like it will be over the budget for the year.
Mayor?
Yes, Tom?
If we're paying for last year's invoices this year, were we under budget for last year then as well?
Mr. Gilbertson, I'm unsure of that. I can get you more information and get back to you with more detail if you guys like.
I recall I believe that we were over budget last year as well, so...
That could be. I would have to get you more details.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm okay with his answer. I'd still like to know where we're going to get fifty-six thousand dollars.
I can't answer that.
We'll keep an eye on it.
All right. Do you have a motion to...
A motion to approve the finance report through 4/302025.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. There's no one on open forum, so we'll go to... Or no public hearing. We'll go to regular business and introduce a call for a public hearing on the 2025 bond ordinance. And I'll call on Michaela from Baker Tilly. Hi, Michaela.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here tonight representing this item to have the council call for a public hearing on your 2025 bond ordinance. That is part of your annual process to issue bonds, calling for the hearing tonight, and would allow the public hearing to be held on June 16th. And the sale would be July 21st, I believe? Would be the sale. The project for you tonight are the 2025 capital projects pursuant to the city's capital plan. There is a resolution in your packet with a not-to-exceed amount of seven million, that is total projects. The actual portion of those projects are financed by both levy and assessments. In order to issue the bonds, more than twenty percent of the project costs are assessed based on the current estimates for the bond structure. We're looking at total annual assessments of about a hundred and seventy thousand. That does include this portion of the city properties that will be also assessed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, it's just a quick overview.
Any questions from the council? If not, are we ready for a motion? Here, okay. We need a motion to approve the resolution, calling for a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds 2025A on Monday, June 16th, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Long drive for a short presentation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, calling Rob Baumgartner on the radio-controlled car park at Pleasant View Park.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of the council. Tonight, we're going to ask for you guys to instruct staff to develop a lease agreement with the radio-controlled park, to construct a radio-controlled park at Pleasant View Park. We were approached by the club members, and we got two of them here. They can talk a little bit more about the park. This is a radio control, so it's the cars, the trucks, and everything that they can play with. But they want a course, and we've been looking at some areas, and we looked at the Pleasant View area, kind of by the wastewater treatment plant, to be that site. And we felt like that's a good site to have this type of a park. We looked it over with public work staff, the wastewater treatment plant. We've had conversations with Bolton and Mink. We didn't feel any immediate concerns about this area to put this park at. We know what's underneath it. We know that, talking with the group, that they will not be digging into the ground. They may just be leveling it off a little bit, but everything's going to be built up on top. And so we looked at this as a great opportunity to bring in a different type of recreation, is how we looked at it. This was brought up to the park and rec board. They didn't see any problems with it as well. But tonight, it's going to be more of what your guys' appetite is to continue this process, because they're in the process of getting their nonprofit status and everything. So if there's not the appetite from the council due to this, they're going to pull back on what they're going to do. We want to know what your guys' feelings about developing this park at Pleasant View. So I'll bring the guys up. They can talk a little bit more about what the plan is, about how they have it phased out and everything like that. So do we just minimize this to get the screens up? So this is going to be just a quick overview of the area that we're talking about. You can see the path from where... It goes from the archery park up, and then it's the squared-in section on the northwest corner of Pleasant View.
Since you brought it up, the archery park, what will happen with the archery park?
It will still stay there. We feel like there's plenty of distance from the last target to where they'd be developing their park at.
Okay.
So...
Mayor, can I just...
Yes.
Before you go from that slide, we're only talking about land on that side?
Correct.
The drawing has two pieces that we got on one side and the other side, but we're only talking about land on the west side.
This corner for right now, yeah.
What do you mean for right now?
Well, if the park ever would ever need to expand, if it gets so big, we just look at, this is the main areas of section of land that we are trying to develop this park.
Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll go to Jake and I don't know the other gentleman's name.
Cory.
It's Cory.
Give your names and addresses.
Cory Pavelko, I'm from Wilmer. I know a few of you around here.
Where do you live, Cory?
In Wilmer.
Oh, your address?
Oh, 1404 Ninth Street, southwest.
Jake Soule, I'm from Wilmer here as well, 1905 Twenty-first Street, southwest.
Okay.
I'm co-owner of the hobby shop in Wilmer for RC cars, C&amp;C hobbies. We're just south of McDonald's. We have a customer base of approximately a thousand to twelve hundred people, depending on how you want to look at it.
Really?
We reach out, we have customers that come in from two hours into the Dakotas, you know, up by Fargo, come down. People from the cities come out here, even though they have four good-sized hobby shops down there, because we specialize on one thing and one thing only. So we carry a lot of parts, and we've done a pretty good job, I think, of supporting that community. And that community realizes that and comes back, so we take care of them. This has been a dream kind of of mine for ten years, to do something like this. Basically, kind of to give back to the community in a way, too. Looking for something to, you know, because our hobby isn't just adults, it isn't just kids. We got kids as young as five, up to grandpas as old as eighty-five that come and drive these cars. We just brought a couple examples today of cars that would race on the race part of it. This facility will actually include multiple stages. There's a... If you follow the roadway up to the parking area there to start with, that'll hold approximately twenty to twenty-five cars. And we'll have room for overflow parking and events just along the driveway itself. And if we need to do more, we'll do whatever we got to do, of course. And then stepping to the left, we got one of the main... There's two main racetracks. So you got that oval track, that's a banked clay track. Oval racing has become really a huge thing. In the middle of that track, and that's going to be cars like this, this modified here. And then in the middle, there's a weight box, so that's like a... They give you a scale kind of of how big it is. That's a forty-foot shipping container. That'll be our driver's stand up on top, something solid, something strong. You don't have to worry about anybody getting hurt. We'll put a railing around it, build some nice steps and a ramp. And then we plan to build a lower, like a one foot off the ground with a ramp for wheelchair accessibility, along the one side or maybe both. And then we want to do some painting on that shipping container. Paint a nice mural on the side of it that'll look cool. You'll be able to see it when you're driving that angled road behind the mall, you know? So we want it to look nice, of course. The area above that, that kind of long skinny area, that'll be for what we call crawlers. They're a sophisticated type of truck that drives... You get a... You explain them. You're good at crawlers, you can do a lot of them.
It's more like a rock crawler thing, so we'd basically mini mountains and things like that. It's actually like a... Look at Jeeps and Broncos, you know, or Broncos and Jeeps.
Trucks.
Prowl up that, and basically what you do in competition is you actually set up cones in between, and they got to crawl through the cones without hitting the cones. Just like full-size trucks when they're doing competitions out in the Black Hills and stuff like that. That's what we'd be doing with these small scales, a tent scale, tent scale of a real truck. But yeah, they're just electric, and they just run on a battery, and it just crawls up them. It's like a little mountain, like going up the rocks, and try to get there the fastest time and without hitting the cones, and get deduction on points if you hit the rocks or the cones.
Yep. That's one area that we'll definitely see some regional events come to town. This is going to be really good for the city, too, because when we start, when we can open and start having events, you know, we may host a crawling competition on a Friday and Saturday, and that might bring in a hundred, hundred and fifty people to town. So they come, they got a hotel night, they got restaurants to go eat at, you know, all that kind of stuff. And then, of course, we'll, you know, there's entry fees for all the vehicles. We got a whole schedule of how that'll work, how it'll all get paid back out, all that fun stuff.
Cory, do you have... Do you have only battery, or is there fuel?
Yes, right now, it's going to be strictly electric.
No fuel?
No fuel, no, it's no. In the middle of that oval track, there's a long little piece in the middle there, and that'll be for sled pulling, usually. Yeah, just like pickups pulling at the fair, you know, it's kind of cool. And then on the left side of that, west side of it, we got what we call our rally course or short course. There's all these little hoops and jumps and bumps in it. That'll be for some different types of cars. This would be one class, we call them buggies, four-wheel drive buggies.
There's like rally cars, too?
Rally cars, slashes, so that'll have multiple classes that can race on that track. So that'll probably be one of the more popular ones, or more used. Down in the bottom of that area, there's a pad there, and that's going to be for the drift cars. So you see these cars that, you know, are slightly like that. We've got RC cars that do the same thing. All these cars represent a real one-to-one car, and these are temp scale, so... We should have brought one here, X-Maxes.
Yeah.
So then that top tar road up there, that is actually for weekend drag racers. Last three years, we've been racing RC cars every other Sunday, all summer. Usually, we have anywhere from a dozen to twenty-five cars, maybe, at the most, that have showed up. But if we had a dedicated location like that, we'd be able to do a lot more. And ideally, we draw, like I said a little bit ago, regional people to come for competitions. And also, we might even get some national looks, if things go well down the road. Because there's just, there's nobody out there that does what we're going to do. They might, there might be, there's maybe, what, two, three tracks in Minnesota that people go race at?
Yeah, there's other tracks, there's carpet tracks and indoor tracks, and then there's outdoor clay oval tracks, and there's outdoor short course tracks and things like that, but...
But it's like here, there, and they're not taken care of, they're not maintained. They cost quite a bit of money for people to use.
A lot of times BMX tracks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, BMX tracks, and they don't like them there, and you get this war. We want to be able to have a facility, a place where people can go enjoy the hobby, get more people into the hobby. But yeah, that'd be the drag race stretch, and you should come see them race sometime, they're fast. The... They'll run, fastest one, I got one that'll do, if I can get the tires to hook right, the right surface, it should do ninety mile an hour and a hundred and thirty-two feet in about two seconds. It's that quick. So, yeah, they're pretty fun. On the average of those run, we have a stock class, and they run about sixty mile an hour. And then the area down below with the big colon-looking ends on it, those have changed a little differently. We've revamped it recently. We're going to do retaining wall block on the outsides of those.
Stability.
For stability, to keep those berms, because they're going to be like eight foot high. And then we're going to have the block go above the top of the berm, so people don't try and launch off of those. This is kind of what we call our big air park, where the big trucks come in. You know, they're probably the size of this tabletop here. And they'll launch, you know, big time into the air and do flips and tricks and all that stuff. Jake is really good at that. And then a couple other jumps in there, so... But yeah, that retaining wall will kind of keep people, because they'd have to drive through it, and that would pretty much wreck their truck. So I don't think they'll do that. But that's kind of it in a nutshell, the way we want to use it. This is kind of by membership in our association, like the gun club out there. You pay your membership for the year, you get a key card, you can access it whenever you want. And that'll be the same thing here. So if you're a member, you can come use it anytime you want. And now, let's say there's a crawling event going on, you just want to be able to use the crawling area that day, but you could go out and use any of the other stuff. And then, of course, like if you're just coming to town, you're not a member, you pay whatever your fees are. Now, let's say the fee is twenty dollars for a car entry on the crawlers, and you come and you get two trucks that you want to enter, you pay twenty for one and ten for the second. Okay? If you're a member already, which a lot of the people that would come would be, you get five dollars off those prices, too. So there's incentive to be an actual member of the group. And then at least one Saturday, maybe two a month, or maybe we move the dates around. We haven't decided on any specific days yet, but minimum one time a month, if not twice. We want to offer community days for the kids in the area, or adults, too. If they want to come, the members will bring their own cars in, and we'll teach people how to do it, kind of give them the basic rundown, and they can drive stuff, so... So that's kind of the nutshell plan. You have anything you want to add?
No, I mean, yeah, that's pretty much sums it up. I mean, there'd be different events and that that we try to hold, too. A lot of the communities that do a lot of some of these things do like a swap meet day and stuff like that, where we do like a buy-sell-trade kind of thing, where they can come, you know? That'd probably be in the parking lot or something like that, where you line up cars, and you can sell them, swap them, trade them, do things like that, it's like anything else that we do with that, you know? But brings people into the community and, you know, keeps the hobby going.
I hope you guys are successful in putting on events and bringing people to town. Mm-hmm, definitely.
Any questions from the council? Audrey?
I have lots of questions, and I live there, but I have some concerns. First of all, I'd love to see you find a place to be able to do this. I'm really concerned about this location for a variety of reasons. I can't, I don't know what the berm is that we need to protect, that you can't go through. I can't envision how we can... You can hold big events out there, there's no parking lot, it's just grass, it's muddy. You're going to have to close off the entrance that comes from Ninth Street, that little... It's not safe to have cars driving by the playground and the equipment that's out there, so you're not going to... That little street is not going to be able to be used. I'm just curious with why you picked this spot and why we aren't helping you to find someplace else to be successful, where you have parking lots and can put up tents, and you're going to need electricity, and you're going to need... You know, how is this all going to work? And I don't understand how we can lease it to you and with the responsibility that you will hold for protecting that ground.
Well, it's part, these are all good questions, thank you. That's part of the lease, we have to maintain it and take care of it, it's our responsibility. As far as what's underneath, we're very aware of what's underneath, that almost nicks the idea for us, too. But we found out it's a lot deeper than what we thought.
What is it? What's the depth?
Two to three feet, depending on the area. But we're, everything we're planning to build is going up.
So you won't be bringing any tents when you're holding events, you know, big tents?
Yeah, but those stakes go on the ground like this, they don't... You're not going to drive a ten-foot stake in for...
And how will you get electricity there?
There's actually a small building that's close to that.
There's something from the wastewater or we use solar.
Yep.
Otherwise, it'd be generators and things like that.
Yeah, otherwise, it'd have to be a generator, but we should... It didn't sound like there'd be any issue getting the power from that little building trenched over there, so... As far as juice, as far as parking, you know, like I said, our general use on a weekly, daily basis, this little parking lot will hold it enough. And when people come in, they can park, you know, kind of like half off the road, so you only got one row of tires in the grass. But, you know, people park all over for events, the way it seems in this town, anyway, I guess I don't...
Tell me about the noise.
Not much, they're electric, so you'll just hear kind of a... Can you make the noise?
You'd have to be pretty close.
Kind of like a drill, yeah.
Kind of like that, just a little bit.
They go up and down our street, I know how much noise they make, so...
Yeah, it depends, like on your street, you're probably making more tire, more noise, because you know you got tire spills. This is on clay and dirt, you know, so you're not making the screeching, squealing noise, but, you know, you'd probably hear that, maybe just a little bit louder.
Vicki?
So I'm wondering what time of day and what days of the week would you be holding events?
A lot of that'd be held on the weekends.
If we're doing a bigger event, that would definitely be a weekend thing. We will have regular, like a league night, if you will, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So like Tuesday, we may race the Clay Oval Circuit. Thursday, we may race this short course-type track. But we want to keep people engaged, so they'll earn points, you know, every week coming to race, and based on how they place and everything.
Will there be like a closing time, like nine o'clock, or...
I would say we're probably going to be out of there by ten o'clock, for sure, at the latest, like nobody left. We probably start shutting down quarter to nine, nine o'clock, yeah.
Are you going to need lighting?
I think we can get by without it. One of our four members that are going to be in the nonprofit, I'm actually getting out of the store part of it so that I can focus strictly on this. So it's me, Jake, and two other gentlemen. And the one works at Cat Ziegler down there, south of town, so he can get one of those machines that has the crank-up bright light stuff. At some point down the road, you know, it might be a possibility we could look at putting something in, but... As for right now, we're not planning on bringing anything in that way.
Carl, you had a question?
I think they've been answered, thank you.
Okay.
We're, we're looking at spending a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars to build this, just so you're aware.
Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, so do you have a season from like April to October?
It depends on the weather, yeah, you know, if it's a nice fall, we might go into November easy. Usually we're done sometime in October, early October typically. And we would be getting started late April typically.
And your entrance, you would come off a nineteenth, where the archery is and then go north.
Yep, but everything we're gonna do is gonna stay on the west side of that little road and there's over there.
By the ditch and then the holding pond, there used to be a holding pond by the.
Right, exactly.
So the parking lot by the existing building to the north, that's too far of a walk then?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good way.
It's, it's a lot more than you would think, yeah, it's probably a good hundred and twenty yards maybe even.
And then you wouldn't use the street, the short street that goes into the park, off of Ninth Street then, so.
We won't even let people know that it's over there probably.
If you're successful in getting the lease agreement, when do you suspect that you would have your first events?
As soon as we can sign that lease, we hope to be. Bringing in dirt the next day and hopefully getting going, you know, within a couple of weeks. We've gotten construction bids from several contractors in the area and it's looking like Dunex would probably be the one to build it.
So I, I guess I need some clarification, so you're gonna be on the, the west side of the park, so on the Fifth Street side?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, okay, and then the parking, would you be parking? There's that kinda shelter and there's a biffy there by the archery park, would people be parking there?
I don't think we'd end up that far down there. Um, like I said, the main principle is this first square up at top there. But then, you know, that's something that's subject, we can always make it bigger if we feel we need to. It's just more classified, we'll have to haul in, that's all. And it kinda all starts to slope downhill pretty good right in that area too. But otherwise, like in an event, and the events aren't gonna be huge right away, they're gonna be decent. But the longer, you know, longer we're doing it, the more word gets out, the more people will start to come. But like I said, we'd be, you know, people can easily park, you know, with your left side still on the right track of that roadway. And one set of wheels in the grass, if it's muddy, we just won't let people drive on the grass, obviously, yeah. We might have to park them over at the mall and shuttle people over or something. But typically, if it's too muddy to drive on that, it's probably gonna be too muddy to use our course too. So that's the other thing.
We're not gonna wanna get there, we're not gonna wanna gum them all up with mud and clay and then not have them on.
Tear the tracks up.
This is a question for Rob.
Yep.
Is this the only area we looked for? Have we looked at other parks, like the park north of Boss Park that's off the road out there? There's a lot of, we have lots of other areas, um, why are we picking here?
Cause of the size of, of what they would like to have, it's almost close to three acres is what they're looking at. We don't still have to go much past the acres.
So if we have a lease with them and they break the barrier, they have insurance then that will go through that, that's.
We, we're, part of the lease agreement is we have to have a two million dollar liability.
So we already have a lease agreement drawn up?
We have.
There's a draft copy.
When they contacted me about their, their nonprofit status, they wanna make sure that, that there's an appetite that we can do this before they go and get their status.
Yeah, we're, we're putting a lot of hours and time into this and a lot of money already too, so. Before we go further, we need to kinda say, yeah, we're gonna let you guys do it or, or name, so. That's kinda where we're at, we're, we're probably a week away from submitting our five oh one three C paperwork.
Anything else, Audrey? Justin?
I'm kinda curious, just, it sounds like it'd be a, a piece of, of, um, property that, that couldn't be accessed just at any time? The way that you're talking about it, is that accurate? Like if I just wandered over there on a Thursday night when it's super muddy and, you know, brought something with to run on the track, like. Fences, like how is that maintained?
We're gonna put up a fence, of course, it's only as, it's like locks, they're only as good as the people are, you know, decent. But we wanna try and keep peop, kids with motorcycles and bikes out of it. Cause it's, it's gonna cost some money to maintain it the way it is. Let alone having to go in there and try and fix somebody else's destruction, you know? So we wanna make sure the only, only people going into it at any given time is, is a member with a card. But like I said, we'll have open days and if we're there racing, somebody comes up, they're obviously gonna be able to come in, check it out. Yeah, we're not gonna say no to that.
Getting back to growing the hobby being a, a main reason for why you're doing this, so, okay.
Well, it's a big part of it, but yeah, we wanna grow the hobby community at large, you know, from here all the way out to wherever we can bring people in from.
And maybe then just some of the concerns that council member Nelson has. I mean, uh, is this desirable land in your opinion? Like, would there be other places around the community you'd be interested in looking at? You know, as we're working on, on lease, drafting the lease agreement? Or is this like, this is it, this is the best thing, like when you were dreaming about this for years, this is where you wanted it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good question and a good possibility, I don't know what's all out there, that's the other thing. I know Rob and I discussed a few places over a year ago already. And looked at a couple of things, but Rob really felt that, you know, I mean, this isn't gonna be good for anybody to do anything with, really. It's just pasture. So thought was if we can use three acres of it and turn it into something that's great for the community, why wouldn't you? That's kinda my point, you know? It would be probably cheaper for us to build it somewhere else, honestly. But, and I'm not, I'm not against if we have a different spot that's better, don't get me wrong.
I just kinda wondered too, like, and maybe it's because there's nothing over there that I don't frequently look over there as I'm driving around? But I would think if I was you, I would want a more visible spot.
Well, they'll see the, I think it's pretty visible, big trucks going through the air, trust me.
Yeah, yeah.
And we like doing like, what is that?
Rob, I've got a question for you. If we go into this lease agreement and heaven forbid that you leave. Is it in the lease agreement that they restore?
Yeah, yes.
It has to.
Okay, Audrey?
Rick had a question too, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, thanks, do you need water and sewer?
We will just use, uh, those mini biffs out there.
Porta potties?
Porta potties, yeah.
I was just wondering, did you look at the old Quam land west of town across from the airport? Cause I think, is that like five or seven acres? We can't build anything there.
Where is this?
Quam?
On the south side of forty?
Yeah, they used to have grain bins and pole sheds there and they had to remove it because of that airport. It would be, you know, two miles west of town on forty.
I think I know where you're talking about.
But it's a paved road.
Yeah.
You'd have plenty of room for expansion there.
That wouldn't be bad.
You should probably take a look at that.
Might be a possibility, yeah.
Cause we were just saying at parks.
Yeah, that's right, alright.
Audrey?
There have been, there has been money available for, like that the city could actually have to reclaim that. And to clean it up so that it could be developed for, you know, um, the concern that I have. That's something that I had hoped for somewhere down the road, that we could actually clean that up and use it for commercial property. I hate to see, I mean, I don't know what, what's in your lease and how long we're leasing it and, you know, any of those. But if we were able to do that and said, sorry, you have to move, I'm just wondering about trying to find you somewhere. That doesn't deal with all of these, um, issues that you're going to have too. When you're putting up a fence or how deep you are or all those types of things, so I'm, I'm struggling with this one. And I, I just feel like we have other land that might be a better search for you than this.
Okay, that's a fair point, yeah.
We're open.
We're open to looking, yeah. We just know we'd really like to get started. You know, we're, we're kinda looking at end of August, early September is kinda when we're hoping to break ground somewhere.
Build ground.
Build ground, yeah.
Steve?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, uh, Rob, this might be for you or anybody else that has a history in the council. Do we have a, it seems like based on the terms of the lease, and you guys are talking about putting a fence and charging, membership requirement to access it. Do we have precedent for leasing public land that would not then be open to the public?
The, the lease agreement addresses how it's gonna be used for public, it'll still be public park.
Right, but he stood there and said, you have to have a membership to access it.
Yes, but we're, we're still working on that, that we feel like there might be like a zigzag fence for kids to be able, for participants to be able to use it instead of a scan card.
The thing is, if they have a car, if they're legitimately wanting to go there and play with an RC car, they're gonna want a membership and be able to go there. And they're not gonna want some other yahoo wrecking it for them either. So I mean, it's a pretty, it, it's not something you want kids to just be able to ride their dirt bike in and ride.
I get that.
Yeah.
But what he's saying and what you're saying seem to be different.
Well, it's been right when we talked about with the city attorney and we've, we've talked about that type of stuff, so it's still gonna stay as a public park.
Okay.
That's part of the way we wanna do community days and be able to bring people in and let them have a chance to drive.
And then, um, is there gonna be, I assume part of that lease agreement is maintenance of the.
Yes.
Land would be their responsibility, not, so there's no long-term cost to the city?
Correct.
Or no recurring annual expense to the city?
Correct, it'll all be on the club.
Okay.
I think a lot of it tonight is just making sure that if the council's interested in doing this, we, we can look at the, what council manager really said about the man and everything like that. But is there an appetite for this to keep them?
Sure, thank you.
Uh, I'm curious what the length of the term of lease we're looking at?
Lifetime.
It's a five-year lease right now.
Five-year, yeah.
It could be automatic or you do it, similar to what we have done with the leases.
Yeah, I, reminds me of the time I spent on the, on the parks board with the trap group and having to maintain buildings and facilities. And then seeing them get rundown and so forth, so, um, I think that, yeah, making sure that those facilities are, are up to the, to par. And, and able to be maintained by the, the club, uh, especially when we have two separate entities. That's, uh, pretty critical to have and then to know that if they aren't being kept up, that, the lease will terminate. And it needs to be returned to its previous. Situation, um, which could be a costly expense. And so I, what I'm worried about is that a five oh one C three may not have the funds to return it to its, um, previous. Condition, yeah, so, uh, so I think those would be two items that, uh, we would wanna make sure that, uh, the lease has all.
Audrey?
Well, the previous condition, to my knowledge, is basically they will waste dump with some dirt on top of it. So I don't, you know, we'd have to haul out what we did, but that would be it, cause we're building up, we're not going down.
Yeah, it, but when the kids get in there and they wanna run around there and there's no fence, that's, and then now it's a liability for the city of Wilmer, I don't want that.
Right.
Audrey?
Thank you, I'm just curious, you're talking about a major investment on leased land, have you looked at just finding something somewhere?
Possibly, I guess we were trying to keep it in the city so it's had close access, you know.
Oh, I know, but there's land for sale in the city, I'm just curious with, if we need to help you try to find someplace where it's more about.
We're open to options, you know. Ideally, once we got this done, the next step was we wanted to do an indoor facility also. Like, once we have our five oh one C three, you know, maybe we can use part of the mall or some other building that's not being used. You know, where they're just paying rent to keep it there, heat, electricity, well, hey, donate it to us, you know? Now you can at least deduct that instead of paying to keep it heated and lights on in there, you know, something to those kinds of arrangements.
I guess before, I, I, I'm skeptical of, for, both for you and for us right now. And I, maybe we need to, have you work with staff to see what other options there are before we make a decision to go forward with this one? That's where I'm at anyway.
Sure. Steve? Thanks, Mr. Mayor, pardon my ignorance, but what, Rob, do you know what the digging, ever digging restrictions mentioned a couple of times? Do you know what the digging restrictions are out there?
Yeah, remember I talked to Jared, we wouldn't wanna go too deep, we just, the topsoil, I mean, we're tightening that two or three feet, but we're just giving it off to put the ground one, to get a base.
Yeah, but you're talking about trenching power over there, you're talking about light poles someday, and those go feet in the ground.
And fencing?
And fencing, so I didn't know how that affected, again, I'm not familiar with the restrictions out there, so. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware that when you start trenching power, you're two feet in the ground. And if the restrictions are above two feet, then you could run into a problem and not get, potentially get the, the amenities that you want.
Right, yeah, the power's from a shed that's up.
I mean, you can go overhead, but that's not ideal.
But it would come right along that ridge or, that's already there, where I don't believe there's.
There's no restrictions there?
Don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanna say like, I love the idea. Uh, I'd love to find you a place in town to do this as quickly as possible and, and to bring this to reality. I guess I'll just echo some of the concerns about is this the right location for you? And encourage you to, to work with staff on, uh, at least examining some other locations. And, um, to, to council member Gardner's question when he asked about, is there precedent for doing this anywhere else? Where it's public land that we're leasing for a, for a business or a, you know, uh, to, to come in and, and for membership, is there? I know you.
We have something similar with the track club.
Okay. Okay, this would be something where like, Curly leases space that's also used by the city at other times, like this would be, no one else would be utilizing their space, I'm assuming. Okay, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I was just kinda more curious, um, I thought it was a good question.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to develop a lease agreement with the radio control park club to construct a radio control park at Pleasant View Park.
I, I'm not sure we're ready for a motion, I'd like to see staff do more work and bring it back to us, so.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Some moved.
We got a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Here we got a second, discussion.
Vicki?
I just wanna say I think it's a great idea, I love your idea. I just would like to also look at different pieces of land for it. I think it could be a great, great addition to our community, good thinking.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're open to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if you got a better location for us, that'd be great.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Justin?
Do we have a, there's no city attorney present?
Not today.
Okay, um, so I guess I'll ask the administrator then too. Proving this tonight has staff working with them to develop a lease that we could reject at a later date, correct? I guess my question comes down to like, is it better to, to table this? To approve this, to reject this? Which I don't know is really a question that anyone can answer for me, but that's what's going through my mind.
How, how about this, cause this is what we wanted, to be able to go ahead and move forward. If we can pass something that says, yes, we're gonna work with you and help you get this done, go ahead, for us to go ahead. Doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be here, leave the option to investigate other places and do a final vote at the end as to where it's gonna be. Does that seem acceptable to everybody?
Yeah, absolutely, I want you to, I want you to move forward, I just don't know that this is the right place, so I hope you continue to work on this, I guess.
Do we need to amend the motion then?
Well, I think I'm just gonna offer a motion to table this.
Second. Second.
We got a motion to table. We got a second discussion. Roll call.
I gotta...
Rick had something, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
You need something in writing for...
Not, no, not necessarily. I just would like a commitment that you guys are gonna be behind us, whether it's this place or someplace better. I don't care.
I think it'd be a great idea, so, but I I don't really care for this location. I would... I don't want to table it. I'd move forward, but they'd have to work with staff to find a suitable location.
Steve, can we have the motion say that we are approving Rob or Rob to move forward with terms of a draft, the terms of a lease at a pre- at a yet-to-be-determined location? That would give you the backing that you need. Can he can start working on the lease and then the city staff can start finding a different location? Kind of satisfies all parties?
When we say city staff, who are you referring to, Rob?
Rob.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Is that your motion?
Audrey? We're still in the discussion phase, I think.
We need an attorney.
Yeah, this is this is very uncomfortable, but it's my understanding that Rob has gone ahead and had our city attorney already prepares a lease.
Yeah, somewhat, yep.
I don't know that we can offer you a lease if we don't know what property it's going to be on, because I think this has a lot of, lot of ifs, ands, ors, and buts that would need to go in a lease that another property wouldn't have. I I'm just thinking that the fastest way is to try to do that before we we even had a motion, but, um, just from a legal standpoint.
Personally, I'm okay with you guys if you just kind of all say, yeah, we will be, we'll back you up when we find the right place.
But I don't know that we can say that. How can we say that we can back you up when we don't know for sure what it is that you want?
Well, we want this.
No, you want a piece of land to do this on.
Right.
You don't necessarily want this, and it might be less expensive for you to be somewhere else.
Well, there's nothing wrong with less expensive, trust me.
I understand that, but what you're asking us to do tonight is make a decision off from the information we have right now, and we don't have it all.
Justin?
So I feel like we've got a motion plus another motion and talks of a third motion, which, so I'm without a without an attorney in the room, my question would be...
I can stop you right there. Because you have a tabled motion, that's not debatable. So you may have to finish that motion on the tabling.
Roll call.
Who said that?
You have a motion to table.
Yes, we do.
We have to vote on the motion to table without debate.
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
No.
Davis?
No.
Sheldes?
No.
As?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Gilbertson?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Two ayes, five nays.
We voted down to table.
It is not tabled.
Correct.
That's back to my motion. Justin?
And so I I think now that we're back to, uh, Councilmember Gilbertson's motion, uh, I'm wondering if if you as the maker of the motion and Councilmember Sheldes as a second would agree to, uh, withdraw that to allow Councilmember Gardner to make the motion that he suggested, which I find would be more favorable at this time since it seems that the consensus of the council is is not wanting to get tied down to this land.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion, uh, to develop a lease agreement with Radio Control Park Club to construct a radio control park, period.
Well, I'll ask if there's a second first.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second?
No.
Is that at the...
There's no location in that motion, just that we'll keep talking about a lease.
Comprehensible with that, City Administrator?
I think Carl, did you, you needed to, did you?
I have to second his amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
I I think Steve did, but I think you have to, because you made the first one.
Oh, sure.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Read the motion again.
To develop a lease agreement with the...
I'm not asking you to read it. I'm asking her to read it as it'll go into the record. That's our clerk's job to read the motion to us.
I believe his motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Gilbertson is to amend or to amend the motion to develop a lease agreement to move forward with a project for the R C Park without a specific location listed. Is that correct?
To develop, to construct an R C Park?
Yeah. I think the wording I used was to develop a lease agreement with the Radio Control Park Club to construct a radio control park.
Yes.
So the same motion that's listed in our packet without the words "at Pleasant View Park."
Call for a motion to develop a lease agreement with the Radio Control Park Club to construct a radio control park. Audrey?
I honestly think they should be looking for land to buy versus that we lease them land on a park. Um, so my hope was that staff would work them to help them to find a place to be, not necessarily a lease. So I'm going to vote no.
Well, and we wouldn't object to that either. We just gotta find the right place. That's the main thing, yeah.
Um, we have a motion on the table. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
As?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
A motion passes. So work with staff. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, um. Next is a request to schedule a public hearing for adoption of the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. Christopher?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, today I'm excited to, uh, request a motion to schedule a public hearing for the adoption of the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. Um, this will be, we're aiming to have the public hearing on June 16th, 2025, um, here in this building at our regular council, city council meetings. Uh, the document will be, um, reviewed by Planning Commission on this Wednesday with hopes that they will provide us with the recommendation that City Council moves forward with adoption. The draft is currently public now and, uh, will be finalized soon and posted digitally on our website. And, um, the edits of the documents is in conjunction with feedback that we heard at our workshops, um, as our work sessions, as well as, um, public comments to that, um, the plan was open for a public comment period over about forty-five days or so. Uh, and so we'll have that document ready for you, uh, by the 16th, so hoping that you all would schedule a public hearing for its adoption.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing for the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan on June 16th at 6:30 PM. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Sheldes?
Aye.
As?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
And Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
That passes. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Is that it?
No, the next one.
Oh. I moved on. The parking?
Yes.
Seventh Street, Wilmer Avenue Southeast? Okay, I had Jared down for that.
I'm gonna bring Jared up, back up. And so as you all, as you all recall, Ucap rezoned the parcels at Seventh and Wilmer Avenue. Um, with the new additions to Ucap being built there, as well as the ambulance garage, uh, on the west side of Seventh, um, by engineer, um, during the Planning Commission, we were requested to close off or restrict parking on Seven, on the Seventh Street. Per the ordinance, the, it has to be passed by a resolution per and the engineer's, um, recommendation. So Jared did provide the recommendation, which is found in your packet. I kind of highlighted the street where we would restrict parking, uh, and that's just for emergency vehicles as well as the bus barn that is there to operate. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve by resolution the parking restriction on Seventh Street Southeast, um, from Wilmer until Nineteenth Street Southeast as recommended by Planning Commission.
So move. Second. Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Audrey?
Um, I can't vote for no parking and plus Bolton and Mink said when the ambulance garage is completed, that's not gonna be for another whole year. There's a garden that's going on there. There are cars there in the morning, afternoon, evening right now, um, to not have parking on that street right now. To me, it doesn't make sense because it's not necessary until I can see parking on one side and being on the the other side to protect ambulances and buses been able to go up and down the street right now. Parking on one side, yes, but why no parking?
So we are trying to be proactive. Uh, Ucap will be opening their, uh, doors really soon, in the month of June, I believe. And so tenants should know not to park on, uh, the street just for the bus, bus barn. I know there has been issues, um, during construction that vehicles parked on that street and the bus barn definitely wanted that not to. That was one of the conditions that they came to the public hearing to share at Planning Commission. And so this is our way of being proactive, just to make sure there is no parking on the street.
I I I get the concern, and if Ucap is parking in their parking lot, it's not going to be on a regular basis. There's parking in the street, but we certainly don't need to do it now until it's done.
Okay.
Because the this garden is gonna be there and if guests sells that property, somewhere there will be access, I would think, not from Wilmer Avenue, but from Seventh Street. And so I think we need to wait that out a little bit too, but, um, I can't support it feels like we could do one side, but certainly not now, maybe when it's completed.
Do you want to add anything to that?
Justin?
Uh, so to Councilmember Nelson's concerns about the garden, where am I supposed to park if I want to go to the garden?
So the garden right now is in talks of being relocated. This will be the last season that, um, it will be there.
So to Councilmember Nelson's point, tonight may not be the best night for this, then?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you all can approve by resolution that we move forward to restrict parking on Seventh Street, but if there's certain stipulations that you want to put in there that we do it at the end of the summer um, or early fall, whenever the the gardening seasoning is over, we can do that too. So, and Justin, we can do, um, directed below, we can do a certain time. We don't have to wait until we do it.
We could do it at any, at any time that the council...
Sure. I think, uh, I would like to see parking restricted to maybe only the the west side. That, and that should help, I think, deter people who might be with Ucap from parking on their side of the street. They do have a parking lot that it sounds like they would be able to, you know, there's more than enough space for their residents to be there in that parking lot. It doesn't seem like it would change the the flow of traffic for the bus or the ambulance.
Okay.
If there was only parking on the west side.
Carl?
So I'm not real familiar with the land around the garden. Could people drive right up onto the grass to park off the street? Is that, there's curb there? Okay. Can we do it like November 1st?
Absolutely.
Audrey?
Does Central Care even know when they're gonna start? The last I heard, they hadn't, they had, the bids were higher than they liked and they were rebidding, and do they know when they're actually gonna start?
I have not heard of a start date for them, and I can double-check about if any permits were pulled.
Because it isn't, I mean, the bus barn can deal with it as it is. I know the construction parts were were troubling at at that time, but but that's done.
When the Ucap, uh, i- is there sufficient parking where the Ucap built?
Is, yes.
Designed correctly according to our, okay. I mean, the, if buses can get in and out of there, they've been doing that for at least forty years. I would think an ambulance should be able to get in and out of there as well, probably could have some restrictions. I just...
Without no parking on those streets. Or parking on one side if you want to do it as temporary, but if if we do not restrict parking, the fear is, and people are parked on both sides of the street, that either buses will be delayed or emergency vehicles will be delayed and won't be able to get through.
Okay.
Rick? Mr. Mayor, so what's sufficient parking?
You want to talk about this?
One, one car per unit or?
Oh, uh, for Ucap?
Yeah.
Uh, so we did, um, I can take a look back at the plan, but I believe it is, uh, one parking stall per unit, um, plus staff.
Per bedroom.
Per bedroom, yes, thank you.
It's one parking stall per bedroom now.
So how many two-bedroom units are there there?
I wish I knew that off the top of my head, um.
Looks like there were six units.
Well, there's eleven units total.
So up and down.
Yes.
But you know, it's rental.
It's transitional housing, so people...
But they're gonna have guests. There's gonna be more vehicles than you think. All you gotta do is drive down Fifth Street on those apartments. That's why there's no parking November to April 1st, so that's what's gonna happen here. So you're doing a good job by eliminating parking right away so they don't get in the habit
Right.
parking on the street.
Thanks for that.
Audrey?
I guess I'm wondering why we don't try one side of the street, first of all, and if it's not working or there's problems, go to no parking. There's no one that parks, parks there unless they're doing the gardening or, I mean, it's not like they park and walk across the street to Woodland Centers. They don't. And Ucap isn't even open yet, so, um, I don't know, I I I don't like the no par- no parking, and I certainly don't like it starting now, and there's no reason to start it now.
Again, we can, we can schedule it to be pushed out to the end of the season too.
Steve? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jared, maybe you can answer this question. In the letter uh, from you to Chris, to Mr. Corbett, uh, it talks about minimum width require guidelines for parking. Is that something that is done at the state level? Is it just an industry standard? Um, are there other places in town where we're ignoring it? Because it sounds like we're ignoring it now because you can park on both sides of the roads. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, Mayor, Council. Um, you're correct. That thirty-two feet that I referenced is a state aid standard. Um, there are other areas throughout communities that, um, have parking on one side of a street with a twenty-eight-foot wide street. Strictly, it's a thirty-two-foot standard from state aid, so, um, that's what it's based on. And, you know, if we had a new development coming to town, minimum street width, thirty-two feet, allows parking on one side. That's really the standard that I referenced, so good question.
Okay, what's the motion? It's in front of us?
I believe it was, the motion was to adopt the res- uh, resolution to approve parking restrictions from Seventh Street Southeast from the Wilmer Avenue Southeast to Nineteenth Avenue Southeast.
Are you ready to vote on that?
Is there an appetite to amend it, to at least wait until the place is built?
I'm open to amending it to the end of the growing season to allow the people that are using the property, the garden property, to finish what they're doing. That property is, the, the ambulance garage is moving forward. We're going to do it. So I know that project is moving forward.
Justin?
The amendment I'd like to see happen would be just restricting it on one side. So you can park on the west side, which I think helps with the garden season. And I think we get to live into it when the ambulance garage is built. If this continues to be a problem, I'm assuming you would come back to us and say, we have real life experience now to say that it needs to be no parking on either side. So I'll make the motion to amend allowing parking restriction on the east side. Am I correct, Mr. Corbett?
You are, yes.
Thank you.
There's a second to the amendment.
Well, how many motions do we have on the table?
This would be a second.
I thought we just had the one.
We have one.
An amendment.
One and an amendment. Oh, and, and Steve had amended that motion. Okay, got it.
That's Justin. And we've got the amendment, we got a motion and a second on the amendment for the east side. Any discussion on the amendment? That, roll call.
Councilmember Oss?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
And Sheldes?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Amendment passes. Now we want to vote on the resolution approving the parking restriction. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson? Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
And Oss?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jared and Christopher. All right, last is the consideration of a Sunday liquor license for the VFW. Renee?
So in the past, the VFW has had a Sunday license. Upon renewal at the beginning of the year, they opted to not renew their Sunday license and have now changed their mind and have applied for a Sunday license again. They must have determined that they were getting calls for business on Sundays and realized that maybe they needed that license after all, so on May twelfth, the police department or Chief Holm did recommend the application be approved. And so we've brought it further now to the council for approval. I'm just looking for a motion to approve that Sunday license or to reinstate it, to re, re-sign a new license for them.
So move. Second. We got a motion and a second to approve the Sunday liquor license for VFW sixteen thirty-nine. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
Oss?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. That concludes, other than announcements, anybody got announcements? Justin?
Can you allow a question instead of an announcement?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering where our attorney is this evening.
Saving you money. We didn't think there was going to be that much controversy tonight.
Surprise.
Yep, has to be.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
We'll do adjourn.
We're adjourned.